Mike, do you want me to share my screen with the agenda?
Yeah.
I think I might need you to give me host capabilities.
Cat, one thing I need to get my W D quarter here to help me to change the menu to share. See, I'll show you. So on your screen, they typically go here. Okay, now. So that should do it. Okay. Okay, Sam, is it working for you now? Okay.
Wow, I did not.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Okay, sorry for technical difficulties. We're doing okay now. So. Uh, I will call this meeting to order. It's two oh seven P M. It is the February twenty fifth. The counseling housing meeting. So we'll go around and introduce ourselves. So I'm Mike Chris Tellus. So the administrator for City College Place and then Chair of this council.
Hi, I'm Catherine. Excuse me, Catherine Benega with Community Council. I'm eating lunch, so I'm not showing you my lunch.
Andrea Vicinella-Berger from the Walla Walla Valley M P O.
Tyler Graber with Northwest Justice Project.
T J Espinoza, local entrepreneur and real estate firm owner in College Place.
Craig Vowiler, Lance for the homeless.
Julie Reinhold, Pioneer United Methodist Church Faith Representative.
Randy Heschliff, City of Wiesburg.
I am Rachel Upman-Biden. I'm with Community Council.
Hi, Anne Marie Zalshereen, Y D B C A Executive Director, Domestic Violence Representative.
Sam Jackal, I am the Homeless Housing System Engagement Coordinator at the Department of Community Health.
Okay, I think that's from what I can tell everyone. So with that, we'll move to item two, which would be approval of the January twenty eighth, two thousand twenty one minutes. I will undertake a motion.
I would like to mention that I was there, but I'm currently shown as absent.
I will fix that. As soon as I saw your figure, I was like, oh, no, I spelled something wrong. I'll fix that.
I was also there, Sam. I just missed. I was having trouble getting to that beginning.
Okay, cool. And I thought I remembered seeing you there, but the months blend together anymore. So. Thank you.
So with those two tiny changes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of from January twenty eighth meeting.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, there's a second. So any further comment? Okay, you're none of all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any against a nay? Okay, I have it. Thank you. Okay, moving to item number three, which is the two thousand twenty one legislative session, just update on some of the bills. So City of College Place, we share basically a lobbyist for Walla Walla County and then the port. So there typically is like a spreadsheet. We give bills of concerns or things that may affect us. So a couple of things. There is a Senate bill eleven twenty eight floating around for housing benefit districts that actually starts to dabble into like the land bank, land trust arena, where it gives them some tax authority and some powers as well. So the others floating around. Um, another one is the House Bill eleven eighty nine. That I would say is more of like a trickle down bill that has to do with tax increment financing. So that's like an ability for cities and other jurisdictions to capture some like future revenue from development that believe this is going to happen in the future and put it toward the infrastructure expansion for development. That's currently going on in both the Houses eleven eighty nine and then there's a companion bill in the Senate is fifty two eleven. So that is going in. Um, then there's a couple of other ones. There's an emergency shelter one that's done it though twelve twenty supporting emergency shelters. That's currently working its way through in the Senate and they have some funding for that endeavor. Um, let's see here. Uh, and then there's also some other ones having to do with, in essence, having to expand like the multifamily tax exemption. So City of Walla actually is able to do that right now. But the way the current rules are, if you're a community under fifteen thousand or you aren't a county seat, or you aren't in a county above a population of one hundred thousand, you can't play in that sandbox. And with the Senate bill fifty two eighty seven, there's some carve outs in there where if it does go through, it would open it up for everyone. And then there's some language in there. It's being flushed out about the eight and a twelve year exemption. Um, and then there's also some tweaks going on to the basically comprehensive planning growth management process. So those are basically Senate Bill fifty three ninety, which is trying to create incentives for like housing density tax incentives to encourage dense housing, to get more housing units done for locals and then increase building capacity in fifty two sixty nine. So I just want to go over that because we are in the early days of the session. So what's alive now? Definitely, that can change very quickly as we get further into March and April. But even though we are dealing with COVID, there still are a number of housing bills working their way through the legislature. There is one bill that did pass, which had to do with dispersing additional federal COVID aid, specifically with that one. There's carve outs for additional amounts of money for the Work in Washington Small Business Grants and then some rental assistance and utility assistance. So I know as a city, we're trying to work on right now, figuring out where that money's coming through because there's some language in the bill that doesn't really make it clear whether it's going solely counties or if it's counties and cities. But regardless, there is additional monies coming through some of the federal pay through money and then some allocations of funds through the state's emergency account, the reserve account. Uh, so I know that was fast and furious, but just trying to make sure a lot of time for other things. So is there any comments, questions, or thoughts?
Hey, Mike, um, I know that Rachel was, and I know Rachel's here, so maybe she could talk to about it. There is something from the Low Income Housing Alliance that was looking at a proposal to increase the document recording fees and use that money for rental assistance. Do you know what's going on with that one? Seems like something this group might want to advocate for.
Uh, I'm looking at my spreadsheet to remember what bill number it is, but I believe it's still alive. So that is still a vehicle that can be utilized. I'm trying to read my notes. I may have to email it later, get you a specific bill. But I do remember talking with our lobbyist and that element is still alive right now.
And so does this group, the Council on Housing, pursue advocacy independently? Or is this just something that jurisdictions are pursuing as advocates? So like you would pursue it through your lobbyist, would the City of Walla Walla then also pursue it? Or does this Council on Housing actually pursue advocacy?
I, well, I don't think that has been a discussion. It's really been had as far as this advisory council, if we want to essentially do advocacy through our council. So I mean, that's something I'll undertake. I'll just say how I'm aware of what happens right now. We have, there's a joint lobbyist where City of College Place, the port in the county, we all jointly pay a lobbyist, Brian Unzlo, who works a lot with cities and counties. So he works to further our interests. But then City of Walla has their own lobbyist who essentially furthers what they're looking at. Uh, yeah, Anne Marie.
Um, at one point, we had discussed having an advocacy wing, I guess, of this, of this group. And Renee Rooker and Kathy Covey and I got together and kind of talked about what it could look like. And that was, boy, a few years ago now. And I think the intention was that we were in no way ready to be contracting with a lobbyist to take issues forward. But if there were items that, that we could all get behind, um, it would be a smart thing for us to be able to speak as a body on certain issues. And I'm thinking, you know, the Housing Trust Fund, there's a capital budget request for the Housing Trust Fund. That I think would be probably a pretty easy lift for us to all get behind. Um, we may still have, and I think we'd still have time to do that. I don't know if there are any, any items within the list that you just reeled off that we could all get behind, but I, I, I couldn't write fast enough to keep up with you. So I really don't know what to say. But I do know that we had talked about it at one time. So there you have it.
Okay, well, I, why me? I think that would be something we should look at doing where if there's items where in general, there's broad agreement that we could at least send those to our legislative delegation. And then since the port, the county and City of College Place, we share a lobbyist, it would be, we have a coordination even every Friday, so I'd be able to channel it that way. So pretty easily to channel it through the joint lobbyists that way. Uh, and I mean, I know with several of these housing bills, there's some components to them. Some people debate back and forth. And I mean, there's other ones where it starts to essentially work its way toward better affordable housing like that. Housing Benefit District, that's done it though eleven twenty eight. Well, it doesn't, I would say, go as far as like the Land Bank Act in like Illinois, for example. I call it like Land Bank Light. So it at least gets part of the way there. It's better than nothing. So there are things like, yeah. And then again, that capital amount money for the housing, the Housing Trust Fund, because the way the legislature works is really the odd number of years is really when you want to do your advocacy because the state works on a biennial budget. So a lot of the hard work is done this year. And I mean, next year, so even number of years, they'll do little tweaks to it. But in general, legislators don't want to rock the boat the even year because it's a biennial budget. So this would be the time to really advocate for stuff that has especially fiscal ramifications to the state because otherwise, the next time it'll be seriously considered will be two thousand twenty three.
I can just add on to what both Anne Marie and Catherine said. Um, so the bill that Catherine was mentioning, and I don't remember the bill number, it's a proposal to increase the document recording fee on real estate transactions by a hundred dollars. And it would create a separate fund, which for the next two years would go to emergency rental assistance as part of our recovery from the COVID nineteen crisis to ensure that folks who are struggling to stay in their homes, that they will have support to stay in their homes as we all recover. And then once there, it's, we're kind of deemed recovered, it would go to permanent, it would become a permanent fund that would go towards the Housing Trust Fund for affordable housing construction and preservation. And I think the cap, the income cap would be maybe at eighty percent AMI. I think that money would go for affordable housing construction for folks, for households up to eighty percent AMI, I believe. Um, so I think the estimate would are that for the next two years, the amount of money raised would meet half of the emergency rental assistance needs in the state. If that were to go through, if the word of the task.
So, so I mean, I, I think there are some key legislative bills to achieve what we're trying to get to through this group, which is that one, which is that document recording fee one. And then the general, I would say, capital request that Department of Commerce has made for the Housing Trust Funds. I mean, there's a couple of ways we could do this, which is either a, we best subcommittee into getting into finer details. And then Anne Marie and Renee and Kathy could report back to us. But my concern is we're already in the heat of the legislative cycle. So I think if we're going to actually like advocate legitimately, we probably should just pick the easier ones now and do it immediately. So I mean, my personal opinion would be of all the bills I read, I think the key ones where there is a commonality of agreement, just from what I've heard, is that document recording fee one, and then the Housing Trust Fund capital appropriation request from Commerce. So I'll undertake discussion from anyone else on you. But this is my two songs.
Well, Michael, I agree with you that we, we are in the heat of the session. We don't have time to really do a ton of research. I, I think we could get the, the bill numbers out to folks and they could, they could read them and perhaps reply by a date certain. And then would the, would the approach be to like craft a letter from, from this group that you could then pass up through your channels?
Uh, yeah, that, that would, that would be an easy way to do that. So, so I'm thinking that sounds like a good idea. Sign you out if, in general, the membership of this group is behind you. We could get the bill numbers out. Now, the capital appropriations, there isn't really a bill number. They just do that as part of the appropriation concept. So that's more just saying you want them to allocate money. The one they actually have the bill number is the document recorder fee one, but we could get that information out with like a drop dead day, probably sometime early next week, because I know the next bill cutoff is coming soon. And then we could route it through the appropriate channels.
So would there be like a virtual vote, an email vote on how many support of these two proposals? How would the group decide if it's not now?
Uh, well, I mean, either if people are comfortable, we could just have a, have a vote now on those two. Or the other option would be that members, this membership could just send directly. We could sign an email out saying what the bill number is and then what that capital budget request is. And then everyone could email Sam directly, either a yea or a nay, and then tabulate it that way. The only caution I would say is if we do a vote that way through the email, there could be no like back and forth between council members because then you actually violate the O P M A and P R A. So that's the only danger with that where someone could accidentally do that thinking they're seeking clarification. But if other people are, you actually violate the O P M A act. So I just want to throw that out there.
I'd be totally fine voting now, but I don't want to speak for the group. I can't.
Okay. Well, I mean, I'd be fine voting on those two right now, but I want to throw it out to everyone else just to make sure this just us two be like, yeah, vote. So what's everyone else's thought?
I can vote now.
I think we can vote now.
Okay, well, well, that's what I'm hearing. I would undertake a motion that basically would deal with advocating for the Housing Trust Fund capital monies and then the document recording fee money. And we'll make sure to get the, we would make sure to get the legislative bills out that correlate to that document recording fee so everyone's aware of it. So I'll undertake a motion.
I move that we do so.
Okay, Anne Marie, motions. Is there a second?
I second.
Hey, Julie, seconds. Any more discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any against a nay? Okay, I have it. Thanks, everyone, for moving expeditiously on the app. Uh, item number four is the Community Land Trust update. Rachel.
Okay, hi again. So there's not much to update everyone with since our last kind of update last month. Um, but we're moving ahead. We're applying for multi-year funding from Sherwood Trust to fund director position for Common Root, which we really think could help expedite Common Roots development. Um, so that's basically what we're up to, as well as we started the process of selecting the founding board for Common Roots. Um, so we're hoping in the next month or two to have a founding board also so that we can become officially incorporated and start to become an official nonprofit organization.
Okay, that's great news. Is there any questions or comments for Rachel?
I have a question. Rachel, I, I think I read something on the, on the Union Bulletin about the Community Land Trust. Can you tell me a little bit more about the aim of, of the trust, once it becomes incorporated? Just for my, my education briefly.
Sure. So Common Roots Trust is going to be a nonprofit organization, providing permanently affordable homes to low and moderate income community members who wouldn't otherwise be able to afford safe market, safe and affordable market rate homes. So we're going to be targeting households probably in the fifty to one hundred percent area median income range. Um, because housing prices are going up so quickly here and they're increasing much faster than wages are. We're having this kind of growing gap of affordability. So we're targeting that sector that makes, of the population that makes too much money to qualify for vouchers, for instance, for public assistance for housing, but does not make enough to afford those market rate homes. And we're primarily going to be doing homeownership and not rentals. We haven't ruled out rentals, but our goal is more homeownership. Um, and so folks would be able to buy Common Roots homes and Common Roots retains land underneath the homes. What they do, the homeowners, is they pay a yearly ground lease and it's a modest lease to lease the land. Um, the lease is ninety nine years and it's renewable for another ninety nine years. And then they can sell their homes if they want to. And the, the resale of the home is restricted, it's limited. So that the homeowners can gain equity on their homes, but that they're still affordable to the next household that is in that kind of income bracket between like fifty and a hundred percent area median income. So the goal is to make these homes permanently affordable to generations of home buyers. Um, and the organization, it will stay a community land trust, it will stay a nonprofit organization. Does that help?
You guys, it does. Thank you. Are you guys offering your own financing through the trust? Or is that, how is that going to be done?
Yeah, so we, that isn't set in stone yet. Um, we've talked with a couple of banks. There is one bank in our region that has existing relationships with Community Land Trust and has worked out that kind of financing with Community Land Trust. Um, and then there's also sort of the private bank, and then there's also U S B A. I think a lot of community land trust homeowners are able to get U S B A mortgages if they live in rural areas like we do. Um, so there's kind of, there's a couple of different avenues that we can go, but we're not there yet because we don't have homes. Um, but we are exploring, you know, relationship with banks as we develop. Um, so, yeah, it's going to be multi-year development process. We don't have any land. We don't have any home debt, but we're hoping within the next year to have funding to acquire or to build our first home or home.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there a further discussion on this topic?
Hmm, I guess I'll just say, T J, um, their, their Common Roots is the name of the Community Land Trust. And there is a website and there's, we had a town hall meeting and there's a bunch of questions that were answered from that town hall. So there is actually quite a bit of more information on the website if you just want to learn more about what's going on there. And then, of course, we're available if you have more questions. And I put the website in the chat, but there is no chat. But I think it's, what is it, Rachel? CommonRootsHousing.org?
Yeah, it's CommonRootsHousing.org. And then there's a video recording of the town hall, um, which is on the website. So if you'd like to watch the town hall. Um, and then other information on how to donate, information about how Common Roots started, frequently asked questions, section of the website, which explains Community Land Trust as well. And then, T J, if you're interested, like Catherine said, we're happy to talk. And it is a community-based effort to establish Common Roots. And as I said, we are in the process of selecting our founding board, but we'll also still have volunteers working to establish Common Roots. So if you're interested in Common Roots and potentially volunteering to help establish Common Roots, let us know as well. Happy to have more volunteers.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we will go to item number five, which is the E R A P and T R A P update, Sam.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Um, and so the E R A P is the Eviction Rent Assistance Program, not to be confused with the Emergency Rent Assistance Program, which is the same exact acronym. Um, and so E R A P is the one that the state had already had gotten started last year. And so we've already had well over five hundred thousand dollars of rent assistance through that that were expended or that were spent out by the end of December. And then we have some more funds coming through E R A P that are available. Um, now we're just working on the contract, the contract piece, so getting signatures and all of that. Um, and so B Mac, if folks are needing rent assistance, they can call B Mac. They've been able to call B Mac even while the funds were fully expended. Um, so they do have a current list and are continuing to put folks on that list. And well, I know Kathy's not here this week, so I don't know if they've already started. We should have the contract all ironed out hopefully by, by the end of the day tomorrow. Um, if not, then on Monday. So, um, and it's just, it's just a small portion compared to the last one. It's two hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars in rent assistance. Um, and then T R A P is the Treasury Rent Assistance Program, which is actually called Emergency Rent Assistance Program. And then T-RAP is the Treasury Rent Assistance Program, which is actually called Emergency Rent Assistance Program. But the state changed it to T-RAP since we already have an ERAP program. I think we're supposed to find out, counties are supposed to find out, I believe today, how much funds will be coming through there. We have no idea right now. So just waiting. And contracts, Commerce is hoping to have contracts out to counties by March 8th. So that's next week somehow, March, already right around the corner. And there are some changes and they're still working on finalizing the guidelines. But landlords will have a way to initiate the process with the new T-RAP funds. Both funds do not require that folks are documented and neither of the funds count as public charge. So I think that we will want to be mindful of the outreach and whatnot. I know that we didn't really get it on Facebook like we talked about previously. So hopefully with these next two rounds of funds, we can, we can get that on Facebook. I'm pretty sure that BMAC will put it in food boxes, that sort of thing. And then I have a meeting tomorrow, which is Friday, with BMAC and Walwalah Immigration Rights Coalition to talk about rent assistance and outreach. Because we do want to continue being like, to be thoughtful of how we're, how we're outreach to folks and making sure that folks get that, the rent assistance that they need. But was on a call today about it and heard from folks in other communities, other counties that are, that did some pretty cool stuff with their buy-in for organizations. So found that to be pretty exciting and hopefully we can look into doing some of that here. Any questions?
What kind of cool stuff did they do? Just can you like do some highlights?
Yeah. Um, so Island County, and I think it was Thurston County. I can't remember. I was in transit picking up my daughter like from preschool in between it all. So I had like earbuds in and out. But they, they contracted with some black churches. And so they were able to connect with that population and hadn't really had interactions before or ways for, to understand, to better understand what some of the barriers were to access. And so they had, they saw increases in enrollment rates for the, the rent assistance and now have these established relationships that didn't exist before. And they focused a lot. So some did rent assistance, some focused just on outreach. And so for those that were focusing primarily on outreach, they had like community, like meetings and had assistance with making sure the space had, you know, was safe and had what they needed. So they could then assist people in getting, filling appointments, because everything is like telephonic or you need to have access to a computer or internet, which we know not everybody has. So they did some great things there and just working with trusted members of the community and helping people get connected so that they could then get the rent assistance. So yeah, it was pretty exciting, especially considering, you know, it was all so fast. Like here's this rent assistance, use it in less than six months. And they're like, okay, never mind. Actually we'll, we'll give you another six months. But by then we'd already used it because we thought it was going to go away. So yeah, just fun to hear. Here's some ideas.
Great. Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Hearing none. We can go to item number six, which is Emergency Solutions. Grant, Sam?
Yeah, that one's been a real fun one to work with, I will say. Lots of, lots of fun administrative pieces. So we have a couple of subcontracts now that are almost fully executed. Looking at you Craig, I'll get that to you, I'm hoping tomorrow. If not, then on Monday. One is to support, for supporting shelter, 24/7 shelter operations through June. Because we, when the pandemic hit, we knew that having folks have the option to stay in place was safest for all. So we'll be doing that. And then we'll also be increasing outreach. And through having a mobile coordinated entry person, BMAC will be adding a staff there. They're going to, I think, refer to them as a navigator. So that'll be exciting because they'll be able to be on the ground and connecting folks to mainstream services. And then we, I'm likely going to actually reengage the ESG CB work group. Probably sometime towards the end of March, just to evaluate where we're at and what the current needs are, especially once we know what the rent assistance looks like. We are going to be starting some rapidly housing funds through BMAC as well with the ESG CB dollars. But want to be really thoughtful about what we're doing and what's actually needed. There are some allowable uses of the ESG CB funds for vaccine distribution as well to the unsheltered population. So want to be looking at needs there. Yeah. And I will also likely need from this group, the written standards. I'll probably need approval for, for the written standards. And hoping to have that for the, for the next meeting. So are there any questions there?
Okay. Uh, well, hearing none, we can move on to item seven, which is other business. So CBGT Public Services 1920 closeout hearing. So that's March 8.
Yes. Uh, that's next week at 11:15 a.m. So that's just on the performance of the grant. So how many folks were served and a little breakdown of that. So. And I can, I already did send out this morning, I sent out the, the announcement for that, the resolution. So that includes the meeting ID and whatnot. So if you all want to come to that next week, you're welcome to.
Okay. Any questions on the other item? Okay. Hearing none. We could go to item B, which is targeted study on subsidized housing and supportive housing.
Yeah. And I put those two things there. I didn't think they needed to be like a full-on agenda item, but I didn't want to lose them. But I see that we don't have Renee here. Renee was going to look into the consultant that she'd used previously to do that targeted study on subsidized housing. That came up during our January meeting when we were talking about the housing needs assessment and then House Bill 1406. So I can follow up with her offline. I just want to be sure we don't lose that. That, that we don't lose that piece.
Okay. Any, any questions or comments on the other item? Okay. Hearing none. Does anyone else have anything for good of the order?
Hi, it's Anne Marie again. Sorry, I'm talking a lot, but I wanted to, um, just alert you to something. I'm going to ask Samantha if this is appropriate, if you'd send it out. Otherwise I'll do it individually. Dwight, have you starting another 21-day social justice and racial equity challenge? And it'll be Monday through Fridays. It'll start on the first of March and it will end on the 29th. We did one last year in the summer. This kind of builds on it, but it doesn't, doesn't matter if you didn't do the first one. Lots of great content. And so I'll get that out to people and I hope you'll all consider participating.
Sounds great. Uh, any other comments for good of the order?
Um, I might just add, I, I did send out the equity and access flyer for folks that are currently eligible for the COVID vaccine, but don't have internet or computer access. Somebody just do a verbal plug. If it makes sense to put that at your place of employment or share it out with folks that you work with, please do that. And we'll be updating it as we move through the eligibility phases too, to reflect that. So we're currently looking at those 65 and older and 50 and older and multi-generational households. So if they're living with someone that cannot take care of themselves, whether that's an older parent or a grandchild. It doesn't count for parent and child though, if you're 50 and older with just your own children living in the home. And of course, any lingering healthcare workers are also included there.
We were able to get a resident and two, two actually, two link class members who are over 65 vaccinated. So thank you so much for getting that out. They didn't have really great technology to access the system and it was a big help. So it works. Thank you.
So glad to hear that. Sorry, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah. And one thing I would just say, because this was a discussion point I have with Cara Braemeyer, the earlier meeting today. It sounds like one of the things the Department of Health is going to do is maybe try to put out some sandwich boards in areas where we have higher proportions of residents that don't utilize internet. Cause I know during my random bike rides, I had a couple of people reach out to me in country estates and Sunset Villa, which is our senior system, mobile home parks in the college place. And there's quite a few folks in both of those developments that do not have internet. So it sounds like there will be an initiative to get some reader board information with that number. So the county can help will make an appointment. So I just want to put everyone else on the alert where if you're aware of other areas in the county that faces some more situation, maybe that's something that can be helped with, because I know the county is going to help us in that regard.
Yeah. You, you're welcome to let me know if you do know of other areas and I'll make sure that that is included. And we do have that, that COVID help line, which is the number on that flyer. Right now it, it's most likely, it most likely will go to voicemail. We have intermittent actual on the phone coverage, but we do have folks that are, have access to the voicemail from any location that are checking it regularly. So folks can expect a same day response, with the exception of if they call at the end of the day, it might, they might not quite get that same day response. But, but we have pretty good coverage and, and planning to increase some capacity there so that we can assist people. So share it out. And if you've got ideas or places you know need outreach, definitely let us know.
Great. Uh, any further comments? Okay. Uh, hearing none, none. I will adjourn the meeting. Yeah, the 2:47 p.m. We'll meet next month. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Yep.